Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start this evening, we'd like to take a moment of silence to remember Christopher Coons, more commonly known as Tougher. Tougher was a member of the Nina City Council. He passed away over the last weekend. He was a member of our Nina-Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Committee. Tougher was a huge supporter of the trail system here in Manassia, a huge supporter of Loop the Lake, Trestle Trail, and things like that. He's avid, was an avid writer, and an avid supporter of our communities here and in the Twin Cities area. If we could have a roll, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Tomgrotty?
Here.
Alderman Tedgrotty?
Here.
Alderman Ropella?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Sevenick?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Here.
Item E is a temporary suspension of the rules of the Common Council. The rules of our Common Council that were passed last April with the initial Common Council have a segment in "Presence Required at Meetings: Electronic Communications and Advises." Item number two is no member shall be allowed to vote by proxy, nor shall meetings be conducted telephonically or electronically. For the past few weeks, past few meetings, we have had some electronic meetings. We do have one member who would like to join us electronically this evening, and at this point, if there's a motion to do so, I would accept that. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that it is important to make reasonable accommodations for members of the council and for members of the public who wish to attend meetings. Therefore, I will make the motion to temporarily suspend the rules of the Common Council and the mayor to allow Alderman Taylor to join virtually.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? I don't know. We're probably going to have to do all these votes. Do we need to do them, all voice votes? And I guess I do have one question for the attorney. It's weird having you behind me. Does Alderman Taylor get to vote on this or not, being that he's not here?
Yes.
Okay.
And he should be allowed to vote on anything here.
Yes.
So why are we doing this?
Well, it would be if this does not pass, then we would not allow him to vote at that point or be present electronically.
Correct. Do we have a discussion on it?
Sure, if you'd like to have a discussion. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. We have given Alderman Taylor the option to be here electronically if he was willing to be in one of the area rooms here by himself. He chose not to do that. We gave him that option. We do have a rule that says you have to be here by proxy. No proxy votes. So I'm not going to vote for this unless, James, if you can hear me, if you want to show up here. We have a wireless mic system, wireless voting system. He can go in the back room here. He's worried of being around us, but that's the clearest way of doing that, and we have indicated that to him, and he's chosen not to do that. I mean, I'm torn, really. I'm torn on this. I think he should have the right, but he disregarded. And I know what's going to happen this evening. He's going to say, "I can't hear," or you won't get a hold of him, the same things that have happened to us in the past, and we don't get a clear vote. So we've talked. The rest of the council understands this. I just want the public to understand that we have bent over backwards to accommodate James, and he just refuses. So even though I know that he hasn't quarantined himself completely.
Okay, it looks like the voting system is up. If we could take a roll call vote then, please?
Mayor, I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I discussed with you. Let the council members, a detailed recommendation from the White House task force, from the FEMA, and from the CDC, and with their guidelines, in my age, I shouldn't be in a large public building, and being in a back room of that building does nothing for me. You have a ventilation system with many, many people in that building all day long, and the CDC guidelines also states that in a large building with a ventilation system, you can catch that virus. But the recommendation is to stay home. And the only correspondence I got was a text or a voicemail from Alderman Sevenick saying I could be in some room. It wasn't from the council. It wasn't from the mayor. It was from Alderman Sevenick saying that I could be sitting in the bathroom. And that's not part of the CDC, the White House, or FEMA's guidelines. It is the quarantine that you're over age 65. It's for your best interest to quarantine and stay out of large public buildings. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote then, please? Okay, we need your vote as well, James.
She said yes. Motion fails 5-3.
Okay, so the council is not going to suspend the rules at this point. So, James, you can continue listening in, but we will not allow you to participate.
Unless he comes in.
Unless you come into the building. You're allowed to join us at that time if you wish. Item F is public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight. Director Schrader, would you like to kind of go over the first one?
So the first public hearing is the C-2, or recommended ordinance modification to the C-2 Central Business District zoning district regarding shoreline setback. In 2013, the Wisconsin state statute mandated that all local municipalities adopt an ordinance to implement shoreline, local shoreline setbacks after May 2nd, or May 7th of 1982, excuse me. At that time, the city council did approve an ordinance that went into effect and basically required a 50-foot setback for all residential R1, R2, and C2 properties, a 50-foot setback before and after 1982, and then after 1982, a 50-foot setback for all properties annexed into the city for all other zoning districts and industrial districts. In reviewing that code, we do believe the C-2 zoning district, the requirement for a 50-foot setback for lands prior to 1982 was an error. So this proposed ordinance is to correct that error that we believe is there. And, you know, looking at the existing development within the downtown, there are very few, if any, buildings that actually meet that 50-foot setback from the shoreline within the downtown C-2 zoning district. So again, staff does recommend that that correction be made.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak regarding the amendment to Title 13, Chapter 1, regarding setbacks in the C-2 district?
Sandra Dable-Taylor, 545 Broad.
If you could turn the mic on. Perfect.
Sandra Dable-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I am a little confused on this because I have the feeling that the previous council wasn't an error. Because if you look at the state statutes for shoreline setback, it refers to a natural waterway. The setback along downtown is a man-made canal. The same with the Marina. It's a man-made structure. So I'm not saying that the community development is incorrect in what they want to do, and I'm not opposing the project. I'm just saying that I think the language fits, and I think if you changed it, you may be opening up a can of worms on riverfront property and lakefront property. Because currently, it's always been 50 feet for riverfront and 75 feet for lakefront property for setbacks. If you eliminate this, the new language allows a 35-foot setback or a lining up with adjacent properties. So you could have a situation where someone puts on an addition in an older section, and all of a sudden, they're at a 35-foot setback. Because when you look at it, the majority of the City of Manassia was platted before 1982. It's really only the newly annexed areas in Calumet County which aren't waterfront. So I have the feeling that we might be opening up a can of worms by doing this, and I think the city would be better off. Because I'm sure if you look back for the Marina Place Apartments and those condominiums, there had to have been language in there at that time, because those weren't constructed that long ago. And Headwaters, while I don't consider that downtown, I believe they are 50 feet back. So I'm not saying that this project can't go forward or anything like that, but I think you might want to postpone looking, approving this until you look into it further. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to item two, which is an amendment to the facade ordinance. Director Schrader?
Thank you, Mayor. Before the council tonight is a proposed ordinance modification to the site plans required within the municipal zoning code, more specifically in reference to the facade or architectural design and materials of that ordinance. So over the last, I would say, almost year, the City Plan Commission has been discussing this as projects have come up. There currently is a paragraph within that that allows for special exceptions for innovative materials, high-quality materials, materials that are recycled or green. And we've gotten away, I believe, from the intent of that ordinance, and it was the direction of the Plan Commission to look at, okay, what was the original intent of that ordinance, and let's try to tighten it up to make sure that all future projects coming forward are working off the same playing field. So again, what this ordinance does, it looks at, one, removing that, removing that exception, I guess, if you will, and then also looking at surrounding projects that have happened in the last several years, looking at high-quality materials, high-quality projects, and slightly reducing currently. The primary focal point is the new building construction requires 75% natural brick or stone. So reducing that to 50% for most commercial properties, reducing that to 25% for multifamily properties, but still allowing for very high-quality materials, and also restricting other less-desirable materials to move forward to, again, just to make sure that we're still constructing very high-quality buildings within the City of Manassia, but more aligning what our current atmosphere is today with the environment. So happy to take any questions.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? You should sit closer, Sandy.
Sandra Dable-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I've been somewhat involved with this for the last year, and I'm still opposed to it. From my recollection, a lot of the 75% stone, natural stone and brick, came to fruition with the Headwaters project. The, at that time, the project detail and the layout changed its look three or four times, and what's built there today is not what was approved by the Plan Commission. Furthermore, at that time, what we have on there now is what we call Nova Brick. It's not real brick. And we tried to tighten up the ordinance that we would have high-quality buildings. We are a limited space. We're a landlocked community with limited resources to build new buildings, and therefore I feel we should be going for the highest and best quality and not the cheapest or the easiest to obtain. And granted, it is more of a challenge for developers to adhere to that, but I'm afraid otherwise we are looking at more building facades like the PDQ and some of those new constructions that don't really fit what we really should be looking at. At that time, I believe the Plan Commission really kind of focused on South Commercial Street in Nina. They had put in new restrictions down there, and most of the subways, the McDonald's, everything down there is high-quality stone and brick, even the gas station and the pick-and-save. And that was a gateway into the city, and it looks really nice, and I think that's what the Plan Commission at that time was trying to aim at, that our new buildings would be something to be proud of and not just something to, you know, pass by. Furthermore, this ordinance amendment goes way beyond just facade, even though that's what it says. It takes a lot of the Plan Commission's powers away and puts it in the hands simply of community development to approve things. Additionally, I have a lot of concern with existing structures where they will now be allowed to put on expansions without site plan approval. That could lead to a failure for setbacks, a failure for other things that are going on, and it won't be known until someone points it out after the fact. And then who's going to be the one to tell them, "You have to take it down"? We have a lot of spot zoning in the city. I'm from District 2. It's a hubbub of things, so anything that has to do with existing structures, when you're allowing people, currently, there's a limitation on how big of an addition you can make. This takes that limitation away. It takes away any of the site plan review. I think it will, again, open up a can of worms, and I feel we should be, while we can be a little bit more lenient in some things, I really think we need to start focusing on the best and brightest value for the city. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to item three, which is a special use permit for Mach 4 engineering and surveying for the Brin project in downtown Manassia. Director Schrader?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So before the common council today is the special use permit for the so-called Brin project. The common council did approve a development agreement with the developer this past winter for this project. So this is kind of at that point where it's coming through for all their approvals to get those approved so we can kind of get moving and hopefully get that project constructed. So again, the proposed project for this, the former Brin Theater Site and the now-new Brin Theater Site is for two kind of sister buildings, one a three-story building and one a four-story building connected by a skywalk. That would include 43 residential units, 45 underground parking stalls for those residential units, some surface parking, as well as 8,000 square feet of commercial space on the first floor. So again, this project we have been talking about, it also includes many other items that will be discussed. So the site plan, including the facade and things of that nature, that was previously approved at the City Plan Commission on June 16th. We also have a CSM, a proposed CSM, to combine all of the properties out there, as previously discussed in the development agreement, as well as a street vacation. So the street vacation would actually be pulling the cul-de-sac bulb back to allow for a greater expansion of the development. And in that, in the replace of that cul-de-sac, the parking lot, if you will, and thoroughfare or drive aisle that will be constructed as part of this Brin site will actually, the city will be actually recording an easement on that to make sure it's a public thoroughfare and to allow for public parking and things of that nature. In addition to all those things, the city is still also working on our underground, regional underground detention facility that will be constructed as part of this. So we don't quite have the details on that yet, but that will be coming forward at a later meeting as well. So again, just to kind of recap, 43 market rate apartment units, as well as the 8,000 square feet of commercial space along the...
I'm talking about...
Along the main street side. So with that, I will leave it at that, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Just Kim Golden from CR Structures with a general contract for the project. Joel from Mach 4 is here as well. Just if you guys have any questions, we're certainly here to answer them. But we're excited to keep this moving forward and looking forward to getting in the ground yet this year.
Sandra Dable-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Again, my questions are not aimed at the development itself. I know it's a slam dunk. But my questions, one of them was answered by Sam, that the city will retain right-of-way to the water. That was one of my questions, if we were still going to be giving that up. My other question is more related to the vacation of the street. Can I talk about that now? Because it's, you will be voting on this, but it actually doesn't come up until Board of Public Works. I'd like some clarification. The map shows Center Street. In Board of Public Works, it mentions Center Street. On the developer's site plan, it says Water Street. And for as long as I've known it, I've called it Water Street. So I'd like a clarification on the legal term of what that street is. And then, if adjacent, there won't be a public hearing on this until, I think, two weeks from now. So in a way, we're kind of approving it before the public hearing, which I always have an issue with, and if the adjacent property owners have been notified, because anyone abutting that vacated street should be notified per state statute. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we will call that public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to the report of department heads. We have Vicky Bockelman here this evening, I believe. There she is. She...
Can we get James his?
The vote was not that. The vote was either he's at the meeting or he's not. Thus, you're going to reconsider the...
He's here.
He's not in the room. That was what the vote was, not electronically.
Did it say in the room, Mayor?
It said...
Don't make up stuff here.
The vote was to suspend the rules for electronic meetings. If he's in another room in the building, it's still an electronic meeting. So someone would have to reconsider that vote, and we'd have to start again if we wanted to do that. That was what the motion was.
Motion, I disagree, but anyways...
The motion was a temporary suspension of the rules of the Common Council and Mayor to provide for a teleweb conference.
Right. But Alderman Taylor is now here. The clerk should recognize that he is here. He walked in at, what would that be, 6:25. He said, "I'm here," and I think that we should give him the option of either joining us or being allowed to go into another room and be wireless.
Then you would have to reconsider the motion if you wanted to allow him to be in another room wireless, because that would still be a teleconference. If he's not in the room with us, that would be a teleconference. And I'm okay with that. It's just, that's not what we voted on. So if you want to reconsider that and move that direction, we can do that.
I just... Mayor, when I talked to you about this issue, I told you my opinion, and then you switched that on telling Alderman Taylor, and I don't appreciate that. And I think we should have allowed him to be in this building in case we had problems with votes and problems. This way, it's wireless. As long as he's in this building, I don't know where it says it has to be in this room.
It says teleconference, telephonically or electronically. So if he's not in the room with us, if he's on a telephone or electronically attending it...
He can turn off his phone, and he can listen and still be able to vote wirelessly and speak wirelessly, like we are.
If he wants to take his microphone in a different room, he could do that.
Tom, can you see, is he out there?
But I'm not going to know when to turn him on and off at that point either, because I can't see him.
Let's give him that option.
So if he wants to come in the room, he's welcome to join us at any time. Vicky, why don't you move forward and...
Sorry, Vicky. We've got some interpersonal things going on here.
No problem. My name is Vicky Bockelman. I live at 833rd Street for the past 27 years. When my children were in school, I have had, I have two, with the last one just graduated this year, I was the PTO president over a 10-year span at Gigan Elementary. At that time, I was invested in making our school community an inviting place for families and worked to establish communication between them and the school staff, with which a new kindergarten class every year was both challenging and energizing. When my kids moved on to middle school, I needed to find a new community to direct my energy. That's when I found the Jefferson Park neighborhood. The Jefferson Park neighborhood had recently been developed with the help of Neighborhood Partners of Goodwill. Neighborhood Partners helps neighbors establish, among many other things, physical boundaries of their neighborhood, common interests by taking a door-to-door asset inventory, forming a core team in areas that neighbors wish to focus on, and continual support even after they can sustain themselves. So for the past four-plus years, I have been involved focusing on these neighbor-created areas, which include connecting neighbors, beautifying and making the park more family-friendly, property maintenance, and safety for the Jefferson Park neighborhood. We are very proud of our signature event, Portrait Palooza, created by neighbors Joe Whiterd and Chris Evenson. We will be putting on, it will be on hiatus this year, but look forward to resume next summer. Our Potluck in the Park, held for the past five years, has been our most attended social event with an average of 80 to 100 people. Our Kites and Cookies, building over the last two years, partners with Jefferson School and the community organizations to bring families out to fly kites in what we like to call the gem of the neighborhood, Jefferson Park. Another initiative we have undertaken in the Jefferson Park neighborhood is taking advantage of our neighbors' gifts and talents to share with young people and other neighbors to form intergenerational and peer-to-peer relationships. with young people and other neighbors to form intergenerational and peer-to-peer relationships around common interests. Not only am I excited about the Jefferson Park neighborhood, but I am equally excited about Neighborhood Partners' Great Neighbor Shout-Out. The Great Neighbor Shout-Out is an opportunity for Greater Manassia area residents to acknowledge the kind things they see neighbors doing for one another and to celebrate those kindnesses as a community. Neighborly acts of care and generosity, such as running the snowblower down the block, sharing garden vegetables, or lending a tool, are simple kindnesses we appreciate our neighbors for. Especially during this global pandemic, neighbors are supporting one another in many new ways. It's with the Great Neighbor Shout-Out that we want to recognize our awesome Manassia neighbors. Neighbors will receive a friendly recognition letter, and someday, when it is safe to do so, we will celebrate in person. It's with this initiative that Neighborhood Partners will be working on forming several other neighborhoods in Manassia over the next two years. We want to thank the Boys and Girls Club, the Senior Center, the Manassia School District, the Manassia Library, the City of Manassia, departments including the police, the community development, and the mayor's office for working together to help us reach as many residents as possible. Submissions can be made both online or mailed, and a copy is included in your packet. Thank you for your time, and please encourage those in your districts to recognize their neighbors for their acts of kindness. If you have any further questions, they can be directed toward Julie Philippeck, um, who is with Neighborhood Partners, um, through Goodwill, and her number is nine-two-zero-two-one-seven-eight-seven-four-four. Thank you.
Before I'm going to let you leave, does anyone on the council have any questions for Vicki? Alderman Sevigny, did you have something?
Oh, no, that was left on.
Okay.
Was I breathing heavy?
Nope, I just saw your light was on. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here this evening.
Sure.
Uh, in the, uh, letter that was in our packet, it says nominations will be accepted March through May fifteenth. So do you have an update on the dates for that?
Um, I, yes, and I apologize. We had, we were, I was going to be present to you before the pandemic started. Um, we don't have any dates set for this, at this time, but we're probably going to go throughout the summer, is my guess.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming tonight, Vicki.
Thank you.
We also have Director McKinney here this evening for our bi-weekly COVID update. I think she has a PowerPoint as well.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay. There was a little bit of muffling because I had a thicker mask on last time, so, um, it was mentioned I might want to take my mask off, but you, if you can hear me, I'm, I'm good with leaving it on. Um, so as we navigate through COVID-nineteen pandemic, the Health Department's working hard to track measures daily that help inform our decisions. Thank you, Sam. Make sure I'm going in the right direction with this. Left, okay. Here we go. And so we've been gathering the metrics, um, for quite some time, and the last time we met, we talked about, uh, the three types of metrics we're looking at, and we look at epidemiology and public health and healthcare. Uh, but I want to give you kind of a total picture first. So, um, in the state of Wisconsin, right now, we have five hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirteen total negative cases, uh, for COVID-nineteen, thirty-two thousand sixty-one positive, uh, ever hospitalized, three thousand six hundred and two, total deaths, seven ninety-six, and those who have recovered is twenty-five thousand two forty-two. For the city of Manassia, we've had, uh, one thousand five hundred and seventeen negative tests, seventy-seven positives, and you can see the Calumet and Winnebago County breakdown. We've had four that have been hospitalized, no deaths, sixty-seven people have recovered, and twenty people are, um, being, are under contact investigations at this time. Um, the Health Department staff completes the contact tracing, and they identify any follow-ups with any people who have had close contacts with individuals that are positive. Um, as of this afternoon, too, in addition to the twenty contact investigations, we have eleven suspect or pending test results. So that kind of gives you a picture of the city. And then you can see the county breakdown, which is, uh, what, three thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine negative tests in Calumet County, one hundred and nineteen positives, and that doesn't, uh, include the Calumet, uh, side of Manassia, and then two total deaths in Calumet County. And for Winnebago County, they've had eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty-two negative tests, seven hundred and fifteen positives. Again, that includes, um, the Manassia people in Manassia who have tested positive from Winnebago County, and there have been thirteen deaths. And if you recall, when we talked last, the epidemiology, the public health, and the healthcare pieces that we're looking at, I want to point to, um, a bit of good news. The epidemiology, or the threshold of cases that, um, are positive as a percent of the total number of tests, uh, we want to be below five percent. We're at three-point-eight-two average across a fourteen-day period. It was in the yellow the last time we met. Um, and, and so we keep a close eye on that. The stubborn metric that we're having right now is the incidence. Uh, what we're looking for, what we want to have is two cases per fourteen-day period, and we have been, um, we are right now at twelve new cases over a fourteen-day period, and that puts us in the red. So when you look at two cases per fourteen-day period, that's where we, that's ideal. Yellow is two to nine cases per fourteen-day period. We're in the red. We have greater than nine cases during a fourteen-day period.
Ideally, it would be zero.
Yeah, ideally, it would be zero. You are absolutely correct. Um, and this helps us to determine, you know, is it spreading in the community? Um, healthcare testing, actually, uh, we would like to be greater than twenty-eight tests per day, and I spoke with you the last meeting about the funding we have from the CARES Act to help us boost this. It hasn't been put into effect yet. It will be, I hope, after our Personnel Committee meeting tonight. Um, we're aiming for a good twenty-eight tests per day. We're at twenty-two point forty-three tests per day, so we're in the yellow in that area. We're doing okay. But if we get below fourteen tests per day, then we're in an area of concern. Right now, we're in the yellow. Um, for public health contact tracing, you know, is our staff able to manage the cases that come in? And basically, we have, um, more than eighty-five, uh, let's see. The measure is more than eighty-five percent of all new cases are contacted within twenty-four hours. And I have to, again, give a great shout-out to our staff. They've been doing a remarkable job getting ahold of people as soon as we have positive test results or negative test, positive test results. We get it within twenty-four hours, and negative test results, um, within forty-eight hours of our notification. So they've been doing a great job there. Um, as we look at the healthcare capacity, we want to make sure that there's robust testing in place for healthcare workers. And right now, um, that, that data does lag a little bit, so it may not be a hundred percent accurate of today, as of today, but it was in the green. Um, we have, uh, been able to arrange for testing for all symptomatic clinical staff. Um, are they able to treat patients without crisis care? And right now, um, they, they have been. They have enough supplies and staffing. Um, and then their healthcare capacity is stable or decreasing numbers of infected healthcare workers. Um, we're also, uh, in the green as of, uh, probably a couple weeks ago. So that's being closely monitored by the state. So we have those status reports for you right now. And then there was a question last time, I believe Alderman Nichols had, about the demographic data. So we put together some slides for you, and it's a little on the small side, so I'll try to, to read that for you. Um, we have the, uh, cases by county residents updated, and I shared that with you earlier. And then by age range, and we did it two ways. We showed you the age in real numbers, so you can see, um, zero to nine, there's one case, ten to nineteen is six cases, twenty to twenty-nine is nineteen cases, thirty to thirty-nine is nineteen cases, forty to forty-nine is eleven, fifty to fifty-nine is eleven, sixty to sixty-nine is six, seventy to seventy-nine is two, eighty to eighty-nine is two, and ninety and above, we do not have cases. Um, but you can see the percentage that goes along with that, and I think this mirrors the concern that people have had with younger age groups now that are, um, contracting COVID-nineteen, with, um, uh, twenty-four point seven percent of our cases in the twenty-to-twenty-nine-year-old group and in the thirty-to-thirty-nine-year-old group. Um, it tells me, though, that we're probably doing a good job protecting those that are older, and we have to continue, um, with that. The gender, you can see the majority of the cases that we have, um, by gender, the percent male is higher than percent female. Don't have any rationale for that. Um, so these are our demographic data. Um, I can go into greater depth when we have additional time. Um, we do have some background slides for you to help. Uh, what we're going to be concentrating on in the next few weeks is really getting that contact tracing and testing, um, boosted so that we can identify positive cases, get them isolated, and then get the close contacts, um, quarantined so that we can limit the spread and get that, uh, case, case countdown. Um, so as time goes by, I just wanted to mention that we're going to be displaying these metrics a little differently. The state is, um, working to, uh, modify their approach a bit, uh, looking at, uh, low, moderate, moderately high, high, and severely high, um, as a caseload. Uh, we'll be adapting that to, to go along with the state, uh, metrics. They have reviewed what we are putting together, and they have, um, complimented us on this, but, um, I have really been pushing for local data, municipal level data, um, from the state. So hopefully, we'll get to see that. Um, I want to make sure everybody knows that the pandemic hasn't ended. Um, it remains present in our community, and we're going to continue monitoring the d- disease, and I'd really like us to lean in. Um, I'm really happy to see people wearing masks more than they have been. We need to really push that. There's been two landmark articles that, um, really are compelling. One was the beginning of June, published in The Lancet, which is a prestigious medical journal that shows that countries, um, that have implemented social distancing and masking have been very effective at reducing transmission. The second article is Texas A&amp;M, um, researcher from Texas A&amp;M, uh, that recently was published mid-June, and that has really supported the use of masks. Um, if two people wear masks, you're going to limit that spread if they're especially, um, social-distanced. Um, we are looking ahead to the fall and, and working hard on, uh, our approach to, uh, flu vaccine clinics. We are not stopping our planning. We think it's really important that children maintain their immunization rates. Uh, we, especially now, we don't want to add, um, any more disease burdens to our populations, so we're going to be really working hard at promoting those things also. Um, we are continuing to work with our school district, the business community, faith-based community, and the city, and, um, we have everything that we've been doing posted on our website, and we encourage everyone to, uh, visit our website. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate your continued support and your strength in battling this pandemic.
Do we have any questions for Director McKinney? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director McKinney, you mentioned briefly, um, the research that has surfaced about face coverings. Uh, are you prepared to expand a little bit more on that this evening?
Um, well, I can tell you what the articles are. If, if you'd like us to post those, we could. Um, the first one, the Lancet article, is what they call a meta-analysis. So it's, they take different pieces of research and articles and review them for accuracy, and they also look at what was effective in different countries in limiting the spread. So the face coverings have been extremely effective and promoted and sometimes mandated, um, in some areas, and they have been effective in, on changing the trajectory of the disease. The second one, the Texas A&amp;M article, um, also, um, was quite compelling and studied how the, um, people, when they pass aerosols or droplets, you know, how far does it go? And how effective is the masking and the social distancing in those environments? Um, so they've both been quite extensively studied and researched and have been, um, successful in, um, recommending that that happened. Um, I believe it's Texas that just mandated face coverings for their state, and so I think we're moving toward that. It's unfortunate. I think people are realizing that that is a strategy that works. Um, it just limits the spread because you both have coverings and you are not exchanging aerosols or, um, droplets.
Can you just talk a little bit more about the levels of protection if there's no face covering, one person has face covering and both people?
You know, I had thought about putting a slide in, because it's really quite interesting. If two people don't have masks on and they're, even if they're socially distanced, they have a higher risk of transmission. If one person who has, uh, a mask on and the other does not, if that person has COVID, it's, it's better if they're covered, but there's still a risk. And as you go down, if, um, the person who has COVID and the person who does not have the mask on, they're very low risk, and then obviously, if you stay home, you are, you know, at, at little risk or no risk of getting the disease. So I'm, I'm visualizing that image, and we can certainly put that up. It's a, a very compelling image.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to the, the minutes and communications. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive and place on file minutes A through H and communications I through L.
Is there a, there's a motion and a second from Alderman Langdon? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item H is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time?
Sandra DeVille Taylor, five forty-five Broad Street. In case you haven't noticed, I'm back. Um, during the pandemic, and even though we're not over it yet, City Hall is back open for business. I'm curious as to what the status is for the library and the senior center, um, especially with the heat the last week and for the next coming week. In years past, the city has opened up those facilities for those individuals who need relief from, from the heat that don't have air conditioning, and I'm wondering if any- And I'm wondering if any thing is going to be in place to provide aid to those people. Also, I just wanted to comment during the City Hall closure, while the council meeting was recorded, it was nothing compared to what other communities provided. Nina had, I think it's called Zoom, where you could view the Alderman. Fox Crossing actually had a live stream going on. I'm curious if we even have an IT director at this point. I think we need to be looking into being able to provide our residents with more information. I don't think the city even has a designated Facebook page. We have the mayor's campaign one. That's about it. So I think, especially in these times, and this is not over yet, I think we really need to be, and I'm the least, you know, savvy person when it comes to electronics and Facebook and Twitter and all these things, I think we need to be able to provide more information to our citizens in a timely manner. And speaking of a timely manner, the three public hearings that were held tonight were previously held at the Plan Commission meeting with little to no notice, like three days. Back in April at the sign-and-dime, I suggested at that time with the council meeting that maybe you wanted to change your meetings to Tuesdays because of the fact that having meetings on Mondays really put a large burden on both the community and the council. Again, now, we had a long holiday weekend, and you had a lot to review, and most people of the public are not going to spend the Fourth of July reading a council packet. I think if you would have had a meeting on Tuesdays, that would have gave you more time to talk to anyone in City Hall. Friday, the offices were closed. That left Saturday and Sunday with no one to contact, and you're voting on items tonight. I still think that more opportunities should be allowed, both for yourselves and for the public. Also, during the pandemic, the, there was a mutual aid agreement between the fire departments of Nina, Manasha, and Fox Crossing. I'm wondering if that's still in effect or if that has expired. I don't know if there was an expiration date. I am just nervous that with Fox Crossing going to be the new home of Nina High School, that they're going to expect Nina Manasha Fire Rescue to be there to support them at our tax dollar. So that is something to be looking into. I also wanted to mention regarding the Starong Neighborhoods program, which I've said a few words about in the past. I would like an amendment, if this motion is reconsidered tonight, to include government and nonprofit entities. Those non-taxable and tax-exempt facilities should also be included. They're not paying into the program. I don't think they should be benefiting from it. I think there was something else, but I will leave it at that. Thank you. Have a good night.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
James Taylor, 340 Broad Street, Manasha. I think we just heard from our health nurse how important this pandemic is. I don't see any social distancing here where my chair would be. I don't see people with masks on. I'm in a building of many people, and I have to expose myself to this environment when we could do it very simply, as all of us did for two months. I don't think that's too much to ask. I'm following the CDC guidelines, the White House Task Force guidelines, and the FEMA guidelines, three federal agencies. I'm over 65, underlining health conditions. I'm following the guidelines of our government. I don't think it's too difficult for me to be on the other end of this. This government body operates together. I had many discussions with the mayor the last, for the last week. He never mentioned that I need to be in another room. Alderman Sevanek misled you. He said I had all these options. It was his option. It wasn't this body's option that I'd be in some other room in this building. It was his option. I don't follow one Alderman. The mayor didn't even mention this to me. It was on a voicemail. And this is the guy who said, "This is a hoax. We're overreacting." That's how serious he took the pandemic from the very beginning. I don't, for 40 years, I was in quality control and health was the number-one factor. And I take it very serious because my training for 40 years with our Fortune 500 companies was number-one with safety and health. I feel tonight that I'm the only one, Alderman Sevanek's the only one, that knew I had to stay in another room. That wasn't by this body. And he misled you in his opening statements by saying I had every option available to me. It was his option, not your option, and none of us follow one Alderman. And certainly, somebody that doesn't have any health background. I take my health very serious. I don't want to die from this. 130 people have died in this country. 130,000 people, I meant to say, have died. That's a lot. I don't want to live on a ventilator. I look around, people with no masks on the council. Very poor example to the public, very poor. We have electronic media, and there's no reason I can't be on this electronic media conducting my meeting until this pandemic settles down. What it is, it's age discrimination. That's what it is. And it's in our personal policy handbook for age discrimination. Every factor, every federal agency is saying to people my age, "Stay home. Stay out of these big public buildings." The ventilation system carries all this from these people being here since 7:00 this morning. Is it too much for me not to want to breathe that and catch this virus than to do what we all did by being on electronic? This is all I got now. It's music on this. No council meeting, just music. So I can't even listen to the council meeting. I took an oath of office to uphold the laws of the federal government, State of Wisconsin, and the city of Manasha. And these agencies are telling people my age to lower your risk, to stay home, to stay out of this environment. And it's very simple that I can do this. Do you want me to stand out there? The mayor never told me anything about this. It was only a voicemail from Alderman Sevanek. That was it. So if all of you else are included in this, well, that's a violation of walking quorum because nobody knew this. Even the mayor didn't even talk to me about it. It was only one person. If you want me to stand out there, I'd be happy to. But I don't want to be in this room with people without masks on because of what the federal government's telling me and the state government. Limit your risk. So I would hope you take this back up and let me attend the meeting and let me vote for my constituents by limiting my risk and my exposure to this terrible pandemic. I don't want it, and I take tremendous precautions, as I've discussed with Director McKinney, in limiting my exposure. And that's the whole thing. Limit your exposure. There's no vaccine yet, and Winnebago County has a tremendous spike with a second behind Brown County in northeast Wisconsin. And until this settles down a little bit, I ask that I be able to attend, as other meetings, people attend electronically. It's a wonderful world we're in. There's no reason we can't do this. So I would ask you to reconsider your vote. I'll stand out there, and I'll be part of the meeting. And I ask that, Mayor, that you bring this back up for a vote.
Someone that voted in the majority would have to make a motion to reconsider if someone on the council wanted to do that.
Is that too hard to ask? That you reconsider and let me attend this meeting? As one Alderman said, in the other room. In the other room. Mayor, I have the floor. Alderman Sevanek left me a voicemail made by his suggestions, not by this body, not by the mayor, not by the attorney, by Alderman Sevanek.
Okay. Alderman Sevanek, James Taylor has the floor. He has had at least five minutes. I didn't look right at the beginning.
There was no correspondence from this body telling me to be in another room. No correspondence. But I will accommodate that tonight if you would please consider a vote, and I'll stand out there and attend the meeting. Randy, would you bring that back and reconsider?
Apparently, there is no one that voted in the majority that wishes to do that at this time. You're welcome to join us in the room if you'd like. We'll get you a table someplace separated, but there is no one that's willing to reconsider that vote at this point.
Because my colleagues, you can't bring this back so I can attend it in the other As you said, in another room, out of this exposure, without these people. That's all I'm asking. What's the difference if I'm there or over there?
We're going to call the public comment session to a close at this point. If someone wishes to make that motion, they can. But I do not see if, see anyone do that. Okay, and this is not a point to debate at this point. We'll move on to the consent agenda. There are eight items this evening. Does anyone wish to have any of those items separated? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, all the items under Board of Public Works. And that's all I have at this point, unless someone else has some.
Where would you like to sit? You can do that anytime. Yeah, that was actually his desk was the one you were sitting at, so. Okay, we have a request to separate items two through six. Do we have a motion for items one, seven, and eight? When is he coming? He can start, he can come in anytime he wants. We just need to continue. If he shows up, he shows up. That's fine. So do we have a motion for the three remaining items? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the common council minutes of six, 15, 2020, the Nina Manash Fire Rescue Joint and Personnel Committee's recommendation and the Planning Commission's recommend approvals.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There wouldn't be any discussion. If we could have a roll-call vote, please. There's no discussion on the consent item agendas.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Item two is a payment to Vinton Construction Company. Do we have a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to accept the payment for Vinton Construction Company, contract unit number 2020-02, for the Jefferson Park parking lots, basketball court, and regrading in the amount of $148,422.40, payment number three.
It's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion? Do you have a discussion mark? Seeing none, if we could have a roll-call vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Stan, did you have discussion?
For Adam or for Cory? Two weeks ago, you said that we had to wait at least a couple of weeks before the hoops went up. And then also, two, the parking lot, the reflector thing, nothing's been put up yet either for that, for on the poles at the pool parking lot?
Yeah, I noticed today that the stuff wasn't on the poles in the existing parking lot that was refinished. The basketball hoops, I believe this week they're looking to do the painting or the ceiling of the basketball court. So they were holding off on putting the basketball hoops up to not encourage basketball play, and they want that surface clean.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll-call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, one.
Item number three is a change order for Myron Construction Company for the PWF project. Is there a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to accept payment for the change orders to Myron Construction Company for contract unit number 2020-06, and that's for the Public Works Facility Project. That's add of $93,586.71, change order numbers four through nine.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll-call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, one.
Item four is a payment to Myron Construction for the PWF project. Is there a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion for the payment to Myron Construction Company, contract unit number 2020-06, Public Works Facility Project, in the amount of $691,398.90, payment number three.
It's a motion and a second by Alderman. It's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven one.
Item number five, Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to accept payment to enter into agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the planned street work on Plank Road from Manitowoc Street to Melissa Street.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second by Alderman Sevanek. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven one.
Item number six is in agreement with Winnebago County and Village of Fox Crossing for county, urbanization of County P. Is there a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to enter into the agreement with Winnebago County and the Village of Fox Crossings for the urbanization of County Highway P.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven one.
Item K is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll for June twelfth through July second. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of June twelfth through July second, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of two million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
They didn't pop up for some reason. Okay, item two is the beverage operators license agreement applications for the nineteen through twenty-one licensing period. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-one licensing period, as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated July sixth, two thousand and twenty.
So which Grady gets it? Second by Alderman Tom Grady, since Ted's gotten a few. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item three is a Class B liquor license for Lake Park Swim and Fit. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the Class B liquor license application for the Lake Park Swim and Fitness LLC, doing business as Lake Park Swim and Fitness, at seven thirty, Lake Park Road, for the two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-one licensing year.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is a motion to reconsider the Strong Neighborhoods program that was voted on last week. I did want to make a comment. Mrs. Taylor had commented that she would request that this not be available to nonprofits. That's already part of the program, that it's not available to nonprofits or tax-exempt organizations. Did I get that correct?
Within the ineligible properties, it does no properties owned in part or holistically by tax-exempt entities.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider that to approve Strong Neighborhoods Menasha Housing Program red line draft of the program, accepting the recommendation list, and to prohibit any elected official from utilizing the program effective January one, two thousand and twenty-one. And I'd like to make an amendment to that.
Hold on. Oh, is, is there a second?
I'll say it.
It's a motion and a second. So what you're doing right now is you're bringing the motion back to the floor that was on the floor two weeks ago, and the motion is exactly what you read. So if this passes, it requires a two-thirds vote, then you can either revote on that, or you can make amendments to that motion in any way that you would like to make amendment towards it.
Okay.
So this just brings it back to the floor at this point.
Okay.
Yes. So does anyone have questions about what? Mark, go ahead, Alderman Sevanek.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason it takes a two-thirds vote, usually it's only a majority. The council did adopt that last year.
Every year at our, our organizational meeting?
So otherwise, it would be, if you follow Roberts' rules, it's just a majority, so I would encourage my colleagues all to at least give us the opportunity to reconsider, to discuss.
So what the rule says is when a member who voted with a prevailing side moves to reconsider, such matter is automatically placed at the head of the calendar at the next council meeting. This is a non-debatable motion and requires a two-thirds vote of the members present. The effect of the motion to reconsider shall be to put the matter back in its original condition or status before the main motion was voted upon.
The only thing that I would disagree with is that it is debatable under Roberts' rules, but anyways, let's just move forward.
Regardless, this is the motion to return it to the table? Could we have a roll call vote on the reconsideration?
To the floor, not the table.
Oh, did I say to the table? Sorry. Bring it back to the floor. We could bring it, put it on the table, too, but that would not be the reason to be doing this.
Motion carries six two.
Okay, so what is on the floor right now is a motion to approve the Strong Neighborhoods Menasha Housing Program red line draft of the program, accepting the recommendation listed, and to prohibit any elected official from utilizing the program effective January first, two thousand and twenty. Does anyone wish to make an amendment? Alderman Sevanek?
Nope.
Oops. Alderman Langdon? I can't turn it off today because for some reason my pad doesn't work. Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to make an amendment to this vote to be effective as of January, to be effective as of June first, two thousand and twenty-one, to not allow elected officials to use this program.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, oh, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty. So it would be for June first, two thousand and twenty, that we are not voting on to allow any elected official from utilizing this program.
So, so you'd like to amend it to read, and to prohibit any elected official from utilizing the program effective June first, two thousand and twenty, and the remainder of the program effective January first, two thousand and twenty-one?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any dis, was there a second? We need a second on the amendment.
I'll say it.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you.
Okay. A second by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
I'd like an opinion, a legal opinion from the attorney, if elected officials can participate in this or not.
Attorney Captain?
It's up to the common council to decide.
Is there anything illegal if the council did participate in this?
You mean if the program stands as it is to allow elected officials? No, there is nothing illegal with that. It's just totally up to the common council. It is a program that would apply to, you know, anyone that they wish it to apply to equally, so it's just up to the common council to decide.
Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I was disheartened a bit to find this on the agenda this week, given that at our last meeting, this motion passed unanimously, seven zero, with one absence. And then to learn or to know that there was a housing authority meeting just last week, and that an application was not even voted on. I guess my point is, the council made a decision. We act as a body, and this decision was a unanimous decision, and now, for some reason, we're trying to unroll that. And given what's happened in the last two weeks, and at tonight's meeting in specific, I think it's really important that we start to set aside our interpersonal disagreements and disputes, and work in the best interest of the community, because we are voted to represent, we're voted in by them, to represent them and to make decisions for them. I voted against this, making elected officials ineligible the last time, simply because I view it as a deterrent to running for office. If someone was seriously considering running for office, but also knew that they weren't allowed to participate in programs provided, as part, provided by the city, that would be a significant deterrent for a possible candidate, and what is it that we're trying to accomplish here? So I still agree with the changes, that they should take place July, I'm sorry, January first of two thousand and twenty-one, but, and I will not support this amendment.
Alderman Sevanek?
Just a point here to clarify something. The council did vote that public officials should not receive this money. It was when we changed the date. The date was changed as an amendment from Alderman Nichols to January first of two thousand and twenty-one. So the council did vote to not allow public officials, and that's where the loop came in, and that's why it's being reconsidered, because this particular provision was most serious to the council. Also, we just had a very similar program in the city of Menasha that's called the Paint and Restoration Program, and in that program, we also put the rule in that no elected official, basically meaning the mayor or council members, should not be entitled to these dollars. So I will be voting for this amendment. I think it's good government. It's clean government. It keeps money out of the hands of people who are voting on things, and I feel very strongly about this. One thing Wisconsin has always been known for, has been, that good government, and I commend the, my colleague Alderman Langdon for, for bringing this forward, because he realized that even though he voted about not allowing elected officials, he mistakenly voted for the date of January one of two thousand and twenty-one, which he realized then killed that provision. So we're not changing anything else at this date on this program, other than elected officials receiving dollars for this program, period.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Here, for many years on the council, if something was voted on, it could come back for another year.
Is that light down?
It is. It's probably that one.
And have we gotten away from that, that you just bogged down government by every meeting, bringing something back, bringing it back? I always thought it was a one year before you could bring something, something back to the body.
This is a reconsideration, so this could be reconsidered.
I know, but before that, it was, it was brought back, and before that, it was talked about again.
No, this was originally decided in, I don't know, October of two thousand and nineteen, something like that. It was before the budget was put together, so it would have been in the previous council. So you would, this would be reconc, this would be changed in a new council, so this would meet that definition of only once per common council.
Thank you. We speak of good government, and I think we have good government. We have checks and balances. It's not this, it's not this body approving dollars for any council member up here. The program was brought to us by Community Forward, I'm sorry, by Community Development, and it was voted on, and then it's administered by another body, by another committee, and that's good government. That body has a checklist on what they go by, and your property gets a score, and then staff has to recommend to that body, the housing authority, if they feel the project warrants having the property updated for the community. So it's not like we're voting on our own dollars here. We have our checks and balance, and that's what good government is. And as the attorney said, we're not violating anything. We're not stepping beyond what we're supposed to do up here. We have very good government, and to even suggest that we're doing something that we shouldn't do, or having someone benefit because they're elected official from something, then we should start charging all of us to have our garbage picked up, because we vote on that, having our streets plowed, we vote on that, going to the pool, using a boat landing, these are all benefits we have, and it starts from the federal level, to the state level, to the city level. We all benefit by things, and for Aldermen to put themselves out there, run for office, want to help their community by improving their home. When I bought my home thirty-five years ago on Broad Street, it was a bad neighborhood. Since then, seven properties have been converted back to single families, and taken pride, and the neighborhood has been completely revived. And my house is one of those two-family homes that was rundown, that wasn't taken care of because it was rental property, and the whole three hundred block of Broad Street has completely evolved in the last thirty years because of us taking care of our property, converting two-family homes to that. And when you have a ninety-six-year-old home, time passes it by, and then it needs more help, it needs more updates, and there's no special favor to any elected official up here to utilize that program. just like we utilize the library and many other programs that we all vote on up here for the monetary dollars. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. And the argument that one person decided they voted the wrong way doesn't hold water because the vote at the last meeting was unanimous, seven to zero, and one person changing their mind tonight would not change the outcome of that vote.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, I cut you off before.
That's okay.
I was looking the other direction.
Getting warm under here. Now, from what I recall, when this program came in to vote, there was no mention of aldermatic exemption at all. Then we had a workshop, still no mention of aldermatic. At the very last minute, at the last council, they threw in the aldermatic issue. I feel it's discriminatory. Why does any other city official have the right to apply for this program? And we don't vote on who gets the money. So I'm, this is like, I have a feeling this is a little twisted witch hunt going on here. The whole meeting was kind of set up that way, with this teleconference, and you can't do it because you didn't want someone in here to vote tonight. That's the take I'm taking from the very beginning. So the program was put together by the Community Development. This committee had nothing to do with it. We did tweak it down and cut it down for some good reasons. We didn't add more money. We didn't give us all this other programming. We kept it pretty fair. So I think it's kind of a disgrace that you people keep changing these things around and button heads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a new program, and we said from the beginning that we were going to be making these changes, and we had basically two workshops to do that. And when someone makes the comment that, well, we're already receiving services, that's not the same thing, because what you're receiving here is cash, money. I'd have to disagree with the city attorney. I actually think this is illegal. And I bet you if it went into a court of law, they would find it that way, especially in Wisconsin government. So my big thing is, we have the Paint and Restoration Program that says, no elected officials. We never use the word alderman. It's elected officials. And part of the reason, and I guess I'm addressing Tom, is that we're voting on this. We're making a decision that does impact us. So we're actually voting to give ourselves this if we accept it, and that's where I find it being wrong. And I guess it goes back to, as I explained, I knew a former Senator, Gary Goiki, who was part of the open government that we had in the state of Wisconsin, and things were done differently 35, 40 years ago, and that's changed. And one of the ways they changed it was to make sure that dollars don't go into the pockets of elected officials, and that's where I am coming from.
Alderman Taylor.
Mayor, could we hold this? It seems like our attorney's opinion isn't received tonight, so should we get another opinion on it?
The rule says reconsideration cannot be held. Whenever the council takes an action and something is done which cannot be undone, a motion to reconsider, so basically it can't be held.
I think if we're questioning our attorney, we should get another opinion then at some point after this meeting, if someone's saying that we're breaking the law.
We have an opinion of our attorney, and that would be the opinion of the city at this point.
It is being challenged.
If one of our aldermen feels differently, that is their opinion, or if I feel differently, that's my opinion, but the opinion of the city attorney is the opinion of the city.
Thank you.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is tough. We can't take our personal opinions of people and put it into ordinances or rules or regulations or programs. We do have a housing authority committee. They vote on the projects based on people's time that they filled out their application on time. They might have, you know, they set money aside. They might have contractors hoping that they can call them up if they get approved for certain things. So it's tough, and being an elected official, I don't think we're taken from a cookie pot here, but I don't know if we should be allowed to even be tempted. But we're here for the taxpayers and the levies and the TIFs and all these programs, and we vote on them. We live in a city. We pay our city taxes. Some of our directors don't live in the city, but they can't get this program anyhow because they don't live in the city. But that's why this is tough. There are very valid points here. So I'm still gonna, I'm on the fence a little bit, but I just don't think we can just say because we're elected officials, we can't benefit from programs that we help to make and hopefully bring people into our city. So still, I'm thinking about this one, but valid points on both sides. Thank you.
Alderman Sevanik.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I also want to make it very clear that at the last council meeting, when I voted for this, I had no idea that an alderman applied for this. I swear to God. I learned of it after the meeting from one of my colleagues.
Alderman Taylor.
And furthermore, in that application that goes to the redevelopment authority, there's no names, so they're not looking at names and judging names as they're correct. And they see a scorecard that's put together by the staff. Could you use your mic?
Is it a question?
The redevelopment authority doesn't see people's names.
The housing authority, yes, on the applications or the checklist that gets submitted, do not see the names, and the city staff fills that out, yes.
And then explain the scorecard.
So again, based upon some of the criteria, we looked at certain elements that can be taken into consideration and graded, if you will, as part of a rubric to give the housing authority a better indication of good and bad projects. But again, that is still staff's opinion, so we do still leave that up for interpretation by the housing authority members.
So the application, the scorecard stands on its own on the project? And then does staff recommend or not recommend?
Based upon the rubric and the project, yes, staff does make a recommendation.
Okay. Can you explain the rubric a little bit?
As just stated, it's a grading system that looks at certain criteria to see if a project meets the requirements or the intent of the program.
Okay. And who is that put together by?
It is put together by staff.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion right now, what is on the table is an amendment to add effective June 1st, I should probably, to make the motion read, and to prohibit any elected official from utilizing the program effective June 1st and the remainder effective January 1st. Correct? Seeing no further discussion, could we have a vote on the amendment? Look at that, you had it up there.
Motion fails four-four.
I will vote no as well. So now we are back to the original motion. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. For the sake of discussion, based on what's transpired this evening, I'll offer an amendment to remove the prohibition of elected officials.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, to amend. I lost the motion here again now. Where did it go? There it is. To amend the motion, removing the words, and to prohibit any elected official from utilizing the program. Is that correct? And there was a second by Alderman Schmidt, correct? Alderman Repella.
You know, I've talked to at least five people in my district, and they think it's a crime that any elected official would be taking this money. So at least five people in my district believe that it's, even some at Lake Park Fitness even, that live in my district. This is not right, and now we're going to extend it forever that public officials can get this free money. We shouldn't even allow it the first time. I'm very disappointed with the alderman that accepted the money, or at least put his name up there to accept money if he's allowed to give it, because the housing program still has not given him the money. And I don't know how he can sleep at night, because that's terrible to take that money from the city. Elected officials, we started this program, and if maybe we didn't start the program, he wouldn't have been able to get the money. I don't know how you can sleep at night. That's a crook. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
I did talk to Alderman Repella on the phone, and I said to him, when you go running down the street, say to your constituents that, what do you think about aldermen getting free money? I said, did you explain to them the checks and balance that this government has? That Community Development Department came up with this program, that the housing authority takes all the information and then scores it, and then staff recommends to the housing authority, and then the housing authority votes on that? Alderman Repella said, no. So just to go down the street and say, you think aldermen should get free money? Well, it's not really free money, and there's a whole process of our government process here that takes place. Just like, again, we vote on our garbage being picked up or our snowplow. We vote on those dollars up here. And so again, it wasn't fully explained properly to people as I asked them. Thank you. And again, our attorney would not be here, would not, if something was illegal, we wouldn't be moving forward with this. And to make those kind of comments, and comments about how do you sleep at night? I go by the law, and this is what the laws did, and this is how the program was set up, and it's government checks and balances.
Hasn't been set up yet, James.
Alderman Sevanik.
I don't get paid to have the city pick up my garbage. That's the difference. They don't give me money to come to my house and pick up my garbage. So don't scramble this. That's inappropriate. You know, Alderman Nichols, I'm very disappointed you made this motion. You know, I respected your wishes on the other areas and with your 2021 date, because you had personally known people in your district that applied, and I understood that and respected that, and gave you the courtesy of allowing for those to be approved. Maybe what we ought to do is just scrap the whole program. Because it has done a really good thing for our community, turned into a bunch of garbage. It's unfortunate, and it's all about greed. It's terrible.
Alderman Repella.
Thank you. Is it allowed to make an amendment to end the program right now?
You can do that after.
Okay, then after that motion.
You could.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, the amendment is as listed up on the board. If we could have a roll call vote, please. So basically what this, okay, so what this is doing is it's allowing the program to be open to anyone, including elected officials. So if you vote to, you can change it right on there. Yep, you can just hit the other button. So if you vote yes, you're allowing anyone, including elected officials. If you vote no, you're prohibiting elected officials starting in January of 2021.
Motion fails four-four.
And I will vote yes on this one. Maybe. Did it work? It doesn't work, but I will vote yes. So then the motion carries.
Motion carries.
So now we have the motion as amended, and if, I'm not sure exactly how he would make that motion, Attorney Captain, to amend it to terminate the program effective.
Well, you have a main motion.
Okay. Hold on, I'm trying to find out how you would do what you're trying to do. But that motion's not on the agenda. So you could amend this to suspend the program? So you could make a motion, Alderman Repella, what you could do is you could make a motion to amend to terminate the program effective a certain date, tomorrow, today, whatever.
I'll make an amendment to terminate the program as of June 1st, 2020. I can't live with how we allow this program to go downhill.
That motion would not be germane, because we have, yes, approved.
July 1st.
You could do it as of today.
Okay, July 6th, 2020.
Would it be to terminate the program or to, that would not, it's hard having you behind. If we terminate the programs of today, the approved projects would still be continued. Okay.
Correct, they'd just no longer take any applications.
No new applications, no new approvals. Okay. So there's a motion. No new applications, no new approvals. Okay. So there's a motion to term, to amend to terminate the program effective today. Is there discussion? Oh, is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, what are the status of applications as of today?
I do not have the numbers on pending applications. I would have to gather that data. But we did just have a Housing Authority meeting on July 29th. So those applications that were received in early June were taken through that Housing Authority meeting, and I believe there is one still pending on that, from that meeting.
One pending from that meeting, and are you aware of any applications that have been submitted but are being in review?
There likely is, but I, I don't have the, the numbers on that at this time.
Thank you.
Alderman Grati?
Thank you, Mayor. This is embarrassing. Even though I voted and I didn't win, voted, didn't win, you can't vote for this. You can't terminate a program that so many people worked so hard to get going, put together, put the money there for, because of eight, I'm gonna call all of us eight stubborn people up here. It's not fair. Let's get on with life. Someday the money's gonna be gone. We might get 30 houses fixed up. Okay, good. Let's get on with life, and let's keep this program going. Thank you.
Alderman Sevanik?
I agree with Alderman Ted Grati. What I will say is that when we do close our next TIF, I will not be supporting adding the additional dollars to this program. I will find a better use in this community for that. We have too many big issues in the city that need to be focused on. Number one is our streets are falling apart. They're terrible. And I know that that money won't go towards that, but there's just so many other issues that we could focus our energy on, and it's not gonna be this one. And it's unfortunate that it came to this. I agree with you. We're all being very stubborn here. And up until this day, this council has been one of my favorite and best councils that I've ever worked with, and we've been in very positive agreement and disagreement. This one takes the cake, though, and I hope, hopefully will, we'll learn from it and be better for it. But killing the program, I'm sorry that I said that. I'm the one that initiated that attitude. But I, I don't believe in that right now, especially with what Alderman Nichols stated. There are some other applicants out there. We gotta honor that. But it's really, I'm very discouraged that you took the elected official thing out completely, especially for 2021. That was inappropriate.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Spent many, my father was from Chicago, spent many holidays, summer vacations, up to four or six weeks at a time in Chicago. My two uncles were police officers. And I remember when they opened Caprina Green, the first public housing project in Chicago. My uncle took us past that. It was 25, 30 years. He tore it down. And when you see cities deteriorate from the inside out, and you start losing neighborhoods, that's when a city's got problems. Not only with our property values, with policing, with fire, with social services. And I know for years, the mayor was trying to figure out a way how we could improve our old housing stock. Alderman Nichols and I, and Alderman Tom Grati, share some of the oldest whole housing stock in the city. And I've seen it personally on my block. When you get rid of the two families, things change. And that's where this program was helping, to get rid of the two-family housing and to help improve our old housing stock. And if you think of a city, bad part of town, south side of Chicago, north side of Milwaukee, south side of Madison, and we're not there yet. And thank God, we're not there yet. And to this day, I can't believe how many people in my neighborhood don't even own a car. And when SuperValu was open, they'd take their wagon every day, go to SuperValu every other day and shop because they didn't have a car. They had to carry their groceries. And they don't have the means to fix up houses. But this program helped developers, people that own rental property, first-time buyers. It really added another element to helping the old neighborhood stock in our city. And for us to take pride in that and see neighborhoods come back. I just had a young couple buy a house three doors down from me. And boy, what they did in about two and a half months was remarkable. The house just, it's, it's up to today's standards, the, what the young people want, and it's, it's really nice to see another house get that second chance in our neighborhoods. So that's what this, this is about Manasha, and other cities aren't doing this. And you can go to other communities close by, and you see the neighborhoods that are failing and failing and failing. And it's gonna catch up to them. But thanks to the mayor, putting together this project, thinking about this for many years of his term, and finally coming up with a creative way to help our older housing stock. And I kept my hat to him on that.
So seeing no further discussion right now, what's on the floor is an amendment to terminate the program. If we could have a roll call on that? Oops.
Motion fails one-seven.
So what's on the floor right now is a, a motion to approve the strong Neighborhoods Manasha Housing Program red line draft of the program, accepting the recommendations listed and being effective on January 1st, 2021. Any further discussion? Alderman Sevanik?
I'm gonna be voting no. I just want you to know that that's how strong I feel about elected officials taking cash from the taxpayers.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Oops.
I'm editing the original.
Okay. Haley's editing the motion so we can see it. Accepting, you need to put the date in there, too. Effective...
January?
Accepting the recommendations listed and effective January 1st. It should say, accepting the recommendations listed and then effective January 1st, 2021. Yep, just like that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries five-three.
Okay. Moving forward, item five is a request of Christine Sone to re, Sones to release 25,000 of the escrow funds for asbestos abatement at 198 River Street. There is a memo here, I think, Jonathan, is that Jonathan back there with his mask on? If anyone has questions? I wasn't sure if that was you. I can't quite tell with the funky white thing on. So... Does anyone wish to make a motion, or does anyone have questions? Alderman Sevanik?
How far along are you with the cleanup? Would the 25,000 complete the project?
Yep, we have, we have finished Boiler 3. There's one more boiler to go. We have 25,000 to get them now, and whenever they finish up Boiler 4, we give them the 20,000 and the project is done. It's a total of $125,000 project, so it should be done here. We're estimating by September. They've been, we need the 25,000, the last out of escrow, to, to pay them now to keep going on to the next boiler, and that'll finish it up. That's what I'm coming here to request. I'd also like to ask the council that if there is, right now, there are two liens on two properties, two houses totaling about $280,000. We have one house that's down in Milwaukee that we would like to pull off the lien so we can get it sold. It's been vacant for nine months, and we'd like to get it sold to cash, to cash out and be able to, be able to pay, pay our bills. And that would still leave a, that would still leave a $100,000 house on the, on the lien for the last $20,000 that has to be paid whenever they're done. So I'd like to ask that, it did say in our contract that we could review pertinent, the council may review pertinent facts to decide the amount of the required personal guarantee in accordance with work completed or threats mitigated. And I'd like to have you consider that so we can cash it, flip the house and cash it out.
And we definitely could consider that, but it's not on the agenda tonight. And I think we'd wanna talk with Todd Drew or whoever's doing the asbestos inspections and make sure that they feel that that's enough to complete the final project. But we could definitely discuss that and bring it forward at the next council meeting.
Yeah, it's, the 25,000 is the last in escrow. We pay that to them. They finish the project. Whenever it's a complete, everything's signed off on it, they get the $20,000 that we send, and that would be coming out of our pocket then, so.
Sure.
I have a question for Nancy. So I'm, I'm asking if there was an update from Todd as far as any type of inspection that he may have done, and if they're up to par so far?
I've been on vacation.
And just so that you're aware, it's, Todd is not doing the inspections.
He's not looking at it?
Correct. It is the state. The state is doing the inspections.
Thank you.
And as, as an owner, I had no, I've had no, they have to contact me if there's any violations or has been none.
Did you have a comment, Stan?
I, I was just gonna tell Stan that, that the progress that has been noted has, is true, that they are working on Boiler, have finished Boiler number three, and they are working towards Boiler number four. And from what we've heard, as soon as they kinda have the funds, they are ready to rock and roll and keep going on that.
Go ahead.
I know we wanna rock and roll on this and everything, but the last time that we were discussing, Ted brought up a good issue about local taxes being paid. And the 17s were paid, from what I understand, but 18th has not been paid, nor 19s.
If we can get that house off of the lien and get it sold, it's ready to go. We've put six weeks of work into it. That's where we've been down there with the crew, and it's ready to sell. And it's a $185,000 house. We gotta get her sold, and that's our cash. So, we'd like to keep going with the asbestos guys so they don't leave on us and leave us with one boiler that we have to, we've got a really good deal here, and it's been working very well. It's in escrowed money, that's 25,000. That's our money in escrow that we'd like to get sent over to keep them going. And I'd like for you to consider the house whenever you can so we can get it sold and get all of the bills paid.
I'd ask the city attorney, is that an option, that we could have an agreement that if we did do the, the house, that we could enter in an agreement that the taxes be paid?
If that is something that's agreeable to the other party, yes. We can do that.
So before, I would be okay with the house thing, just so that you know, is that, that I would like to see those taxes paid?
We would, too.
Okay.
We would, too. We're just, we're trying to cash out with the COVID thing here and just keep going. And that's one, that's cash that's sitting there for nine months that we've fixed up the house as much as we can. We wanna get her turned over. So if we can get her released, we can get her sold.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, if there's no other questions, I'll, I'll let James speak.
Alderman Taylor?
John, you don't have to answer this, but, because it's about 25,000. Are you operating as a business yet?
Yes. Yes, we are. Right now, the crew is down in Milwaukee working on the house. It's been slow. We, we are seasonal to the cranberries, which come in in October, and we buy, and it's been, it's been, we've, we've got ourselves covered. We're, we sell to schools, so you can leave all that kind of...
Because my freezer has the last bag of your cranberries. So, I just said to my wife the other day, I said, I gotta find out if it's on the agenda.
Yeah, we're, we're still, we're there, we are, we are seasonal, we're seasonal year-round in the fact that the cranberries all come in in October, and then that's when we start processing. We are actively, we're an active business. It's a little slow right now with being in all the school systems, and then all of a sudden, everybody goes home.
Okay.
As, as just perfect, perfect timing to get into school systems. But we're hitting it this fall, and we have active business, and we are conducting active business.
Right, as, you know, the, the asbestos goes down, we got less, and we could release one of those houses and sell it so you can take care of business and move equally with that. Thank you.
Two houses, one's 185,000, the other one's 100,000, which is the condo here. And it's only 20,000 that we have to pay them after the escrowed 25,000, which is already in there that we've already, that's our money. So, it's 20,000 on 100,000 should be pretty easy to...
I'm sure if we work with the attorney and the mayor and get everything lined up and with Sam, we can make it all happen.
Yeah, Chris will be coming back. She's flying in, hopefully, if they let her land. But she's, she's flying in. So I'm here. You get my good looks, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. With that, then, I'll make a motion to release the 25,000 from the escrow fund to be used for the cleanup.
I have no clue who's the second, so you can pick. Okay. Whoever you picked, Haley. So there's a motion and a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
It can be changed if she didn't read it, so.
Would you like to vote aye, Randy? Would you like to vote aye?
Motion carries eight-zero.
Is there, is there any objections to that? Okay. Thank you for coming tonight, Jonathan. Item M is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance six. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for ordinance O-620, the ordinance amending Title 13, the zoning code, Chapter 1, Article C, Section 13-130, parent G, parent 6, shoreline setback within the C2 Central Business District.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grati. Is there any discussion? Did you have a discussion, Stan?
Sandra brought up some issues. I saw you were writing some of those. I saw you were writing some of those things down. Could you address a couple of those? I think she had good points, but I think she just didn't have some of the information that we have.
Sure. So I, I certainly would have to look into the specific state statute regarding the government canal being a water made feature versus, versus a natural waterway. So that one I do not have an answer for. Regarding the other comments, with the 35 foot and, and other areas of, of the city, again, the C two zoning district is, is only what we're looking at modifying today. It does not change anything with R one or R two, which is primarily elsewhere on our, our natural waterways around the city of Manasha. So again, it would not have any effect on that. The C one, C three, C four, I one, I two, all of those other zoning districts already are, already do not have this language in it as to what is proposed. So again, that is the reasoning behind feeling that it is a, an error or a mistake. I know we had just reappointed a planning commission member who previously had worked here during that time and, and she felt that it was likely an error or misinterpretation at, at that time as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item two is ordinance seven. Is there a motion? Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to bring forward ordinance O dash zero seven dash two zero. An ordinance amending Title 13, site plans required, architectural designs and materials.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. My discussion is that I, I do have some concerns about, especially Sandra touched on those also. And one of the things is, is that the, taking away the site plan review, could you address that?
So right now, any building alteration that, that touches on an existing building, more than 15% of that building, has to come into conformance. So even if that building historically was not brick, vice versa, if it touches 15%, it would have to go to the city planning commission for review. So again, that application, that, that renovation of that building would have to wait till the next planning commission meeting to where it would come and it would have to meet the 75% natural brick or stone. So what we were looking at here is one, or twofold. One, to relax that a little bit for existing alterations. So instead of making that existing building that was historically not a brick building come into complete conformance to basically maintain their historic look with a, a like or high durable material. The other portion of that was to, to look at having the community development department review and approve those just for existing alterations of existing buildings versus going to planning commission, again, for that, for that time range. That was discussed and kind of went a little bit back and forth with, with the city planning commission. But again, if, if it's the direction of the common council that that should still go to planning commission, I don't think that is, that's that pressing of an issue. I, I think the more pressing issue there that we are looking at, and I think Alderman Ted, Tom Grotty, excuse me, can, can speak upon is, is making a historic building that was not brick meet the, meet the brick requirements as that is very hard to do.
Okay, and you, you talked about like materials. That's kind of a fuzzy area.
It, it certainly is a little bit. But again, we are looking at, at high durable materials, you know, not your vinyls, not your, not your EPHIS, not your corrugated metals, but, but more, you know, your hardy board, your cement board. That's kind of been the discussion and the, and the direction from, from the city planning commission.
Is there a percent based on that? Because I, you know, I was looking at, for instance, our BRIN photos here. And even though there's a percent of brick on there, and then when you see the color schematics on there, it kind of looks like it's all brick. But I'm telling you, those dark spots, those shady spots, that's not brick. So I'm guessing that like the first floor and a half will be brick and then the most will, the rest would be these like materials.
So specifically.
And I thought it has to be a certain percentage. Are we changing it based on this building?
No.
Okay.
No, so that building, based upon the innovative materials, does meet today's ordinance as it is written today. So I believe that building has, and I'm pulling this out, but I believe it's 50% brick, so actual brick. And then a, a very large quantity, I want to say 25, 30, 40%, I don't have the number in front of me, of, of a high durable cement panel. So again, that's, it's a, it's an actual cement panel that, that is almost, almost mimics like a, like a tile maybe as how it would be installed.
Yeah. Okay. I just don't want us to relax it too much where we're compromising ourselves. The other part, sorry, Mayor, the other part here is the section where she talked about being approved in the planning department, not necessarily in the planning commission.
Yep, so again, that is just for the existing buildings. And like I had stated, that was something we discussed a little bit back and forth. And again, I, I, I'm very business friendly. I do like to move things along, but certainly if it's the direction of the common council that, that it should be a larger body approving those, I, I don't see any objection to that.
And when you say a larger body, you're talking about the planning commission itself?
Yes, yes. So how it currently works, you know, going through the city planning commission.
I mean, I don't want to postpone anything, but I would prefer to see that. I don't believe in czars.
Did you want to amend it?
Like Adam.
Yes, exactly like Adam. No, and, and again, you know, specifically from, from myself as a community development director, you know, flexibility is great, but it also puts a greater burden on, on the department. So if, if that's something that we feel needs to go to the, the planning commission, that's also, you know, checks and balances in government.
Okay, I see three other lights on here, so I'll give everyone an opportunity to speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Taylor?
As you know, I left in a hurry and what I ended up with was my wife's glasses in the car, so.
They're nice looking, though.
Well, thank you. And I, I think they were bought to support breast cancer. Okay. On page five, under section eight, building materials. It's about the middle of the page, they're building materials for new construction, number eight. And then we go down to number one and number two. And in number one, it has concrete block where in number two, it doesn't have concrete block. And I was talking to Sam on the phone earlier today and I, I think we should be consistent between one and two there, so. His suggestion was to remove the concrete block. Is that right, Sam?
I, I don't think that was my conversation with you.
Oh, I, well, no.
Maybe it was somebody else.
I talked to the mayor right after that. I'm sorry, I got you too.
No, not a problem.
Okay.
So, and just to touch on that, so the decorative concrete masonry units or split face is kind of what we had looked at acceptable. That is currently allowable within our C four, so I just wanted to point that out. But continue on.
Mayor, did you have a comment on that?
We, you and I had talked a little bit about that and as Sam had said, the decorative block was what we had talked about in the plan commission. And we are looking at more of the polished blocks and some of the colored block and some of those things rather than a standard painted block. And as you said, Sam, I think in C three or C four, there is allowable for concrete block, but now that we're lowering the percentage, I would be in favor of not allowing just a plain concrete block unless, of course, it's a huge building and then there's an exception further in the ordinance for something like that. So I would be in favor of removing that if, if that is so the desire of the council.
So on item one, we would remove concrete block to stay consistent with one and two.
Did you want to make that amendment?
Yeah. I'll make the amendment that item eight, paragraph one, we remove the words concrete block.
Is there a second? Does everyone know where we're looking here?
It's parents F, number eight, A, one.
It's on the one, two, fourth page.
Building materials?
Yep. Building materials for new construction. Okay.
For new construction.
I'll second the motion.
So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion just on the amendment? If you could raise your hand. I can, I can only do people in order at this point, so. Doesn't look like anyone has any discussion just on the amendment at this point. We'll just do a voice vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Alderman Appella, you're next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Sam, I just wanted verification, on the headwaters, on the side, on the, on the west side of the building, the, the brick is kind of not exactly brick. That will not happen at the BRIN building, correct? That same type of brick?
I'm not familiar with the, the headwaters detailed brick.
You have not, you have not seen the west side of the building there? It's kind of like.
I, I've seen the building, but I have not necessarily gone up and.
Okay.
Really looked at it or, or touched it.
Okay. That's something you should experience.
I'll have to do that.
Yes. But that is kind of a artificial brick, per se. I don't know what the technical term is, but I want, I would like to have real brick on the BRIN building. Real, you know, four inch by whatever, eight inch pieces of brick. So, all right, thank you, Sam. I'll, I'll, I'll call you tomorrow to see if you make your field trip.
Are you finished, Randy? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Back to where Alderman Sevigny started, about the community development department playing a larger role in making some decisions on existing structures. I'm curious if someone, whether it's Director Schrader or the mayor or the current members of the plan commission, could share a little bit more about the rationale, the plan commission's rationale about making that switch?
I don't remember if there was a lot of discussion in the plan commission. I know there was discussion internally though about being more business friendly and this is pretty typical throughout the Fox Cities, that on a renovation where you're just changing out some of those materials or putting a new face, new face on a building, that that would be something that the planning or the community development department would do internally to kind of save that month and a half timeframe sometimes that it takes to get something through plan commission. It wasn't something that our department was necessarily looking for. It was something that the business community was asking about why it took so long to get these things done. So, and I think that both Sam and I don't have a strong opinion on either way, so if the council feels more comfortable leaving it in the plan commission's decision-making process, I don't think either of us would have heartburn over that.
I'm just thinking back to my time on the plan commission, my year, and I don't recall a site plan for an existing structure.
There was one for.
There was one, I think.
Jefferson Street apart, Jefferson Park Apartments. Were there others?
I, I will say that there is a lot.
Now I do recall, yeah.
There's a lot of, of businesses out there that, that want to update their business and they see our ordinance and it, then it just stays a status quo. So that's one of the reasons we, we started this whole process was to look at those existing buildings because these business owners and these property owners want to improve these, these facilities, but with our current ordinance, the way it's written, they, they just won't even attempt to bring it forward to plan commission.
I do recall the Jefferson Park Apartments one and I thought some good suggestions came out of that. But I can also see the other point of view.
There's actually two, two halves that go with this. So the other half that Director Schrader was just talking about was if I have a building that originally was a clavered sided wood structure and now I want to put an addition on, what our current ordinance says is you must put brick on that whole building, which gets prohibitively expensive because you don't have a foundation to put the brick on. And then people just say, well, I guess I'm not going to do anything. So this allows flexibility to look at the historic nature of the building and say this originally was a wood frame structure. We really shouldn't try to make, force that building owner to make it into something it wasn't. So that, that's kind of the one half and then the other half is the, does it need to go to plan commission or not? I think the first half is the more important part, though, looking at historically what the building was and how do we continue with that spirit of what the original design of the building would improve it at the same time with high quality materials.
Thank you.
I see Tom's nodding, so I must done okay.
Probably even shouldn't bring it up. One of the buildings was Plank Road Pub. And they were going to redo the whole building, but she was forced to put brick on it now instead of just redoing it the way it was. And that was a kind of an issue, a sore point in my bag here with existing buildings and materials that have to be used. So she redid it and looks great. But she didn't have to put brick on it, so I think she did a good job. So it's just those simple issues that were kind of irritating to me, so.
So right now, we have a motion on the floor as amended to remove the concrete block on, in section eight. Is there any other discussion that anyone wishes to have? If not, can we take a roll call as amended?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item N is appointments. We have two this evening. The first is an appointment to the police commission. Alderman Sevigny?
Mayor, I'll move for your appointment of Paul to the police commission for a term of seven, six, twenty to five, one, twenty, twenty-five.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Then we also have the reappointment of Jessica Crane. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for your appointment of Jessica Crane to the board of review for a term of seven, six, twenty, twenty, dash through seven. seven six twenty twenty dash through seven six of twenty twenty-five.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are desperately looking for someone to join our zoning board of appeals as well. The main, one of the main qualities we're looking for is someone that can say no.
Say no.
Say no. The zoning board of appeals is, is a board that, that looks at zoning variances and needs to look at those carefully to not set precedent and not just grant any one and everyone a variance just because they would like one. So we've had problems getting people to join that board because no one really likes to say no. So we are in desperate need of another person. We're down to three members at this point. So if you know anyone?
Dan, so let's use the say no.
I will ask Dan, that would be a good one.
I can say no.
You're not eligible though, unfortunately. Item P is public comments. Any matter lists on the agenda? No? We do have a, a presentation to, former Alderman Kruger, back when Steve left the council, we did not have a chance to present his plaque and for whatever reason, we forgot to present his plaque in April when we presented the rest of them. So we did just want to take this opportunity to present Alderman, former Alderman Kruger, his plaque. Thank you for your years of service and commitment to helping Manasha achieve its new horizon. And he was Alderman from April of 2017 through December of 2019 and is still pretty active in history and other things that are going on in the community. So thank you for your service, Steve, and-
We've got a nice plaque for you. I'm not gonna shake hands.
Speech. 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 Thanks, Mr. Speaker.
I'd just like to take a quick opportunity and just say it was a pleasure working with everybody inside of this room and there were some really heated debates in the past and we all still walked away as good friends and they still intend to get everybody over for lunches now and then, so if I give you guys a call, please accept. And I want to especially thank Ann for stepping up to the plate and taking over the fifth district representing the community. Thank you.
So at this point, is there a motion to recess? By Alderman Schmidt, is there a second? By Alderman Grady. We stand at recess.